Declaration of. Very interested in the general nature thereof. Hearing done, moving on, appointment of chair. So be it resolved that the joint special council meeting of incorporation of the township of Narenheim and the incorporation of the township. Of Baldwin of September eleven twenty twenty four is now open at seven oh one. I have someone move it and second it. Still waiting. We got, oh, Jason, thank you. All those in favor? Barry? Now we will appoint a chair. So be it resolved that. Vernon Gorham. Will chair the joint special council meeting, may I have someone move that? Trevor? Okay. Me, thank you. All those in favor? Barry? Now we move on to the public meetings, or I guess we will. Be it resolved that the special council meeting is now adjourned at. Seven oh two. For the purpose of a public meeting. So may I have someone move it? Jason? Second. Ray? All those in favor? There is. Just a few, it's nice to see all the people in the audience. We're gonna work our way through several presentations and then there'll be. Uh, one minute. Allowed first person to ask a question. We're gonna try to uh, keep the noise to a minimum because we are recording it. And people at home really wanna hear this issue as well, so it's uh, live stream, so. Just to keep everyone aware. And then uh. If people don't feel that one minute is sufficient, they can write in. And we will direct that at the appropriate ministry. So we want everyone to be heard, we don't want anyone to get uh. Feeling like they're not being heard, okay? So at the end of the day, we want all. Everyone's opinion. Okay, so under, we have MPP, Michael Manta, floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone, um, we're all here for the same reason. We've got questions. And we feel like we weren't given an opportunity. To giving our site or giving an opinion or. Asking questions, and it's one of the biggest things since I've been involved in this process along with uh, Belinda, who. Immediately, as soon as it came to our attention from one of your local residents. Asking as to why a certain road was being upgraded, what was going on, all the rumors, which has led to a swell of panic, concern. Uh, for our well-being today, tomorrow, and into the future. We uh, from my office, we immediately put in uh, letters to uh, the Ministry of Mines. Indicating to him is what happened here? What happened in Aaron Center where this didn't just happen overnight? This has been going on for almost a decade. There are decisions that have been made, there are evaluations that were made, and for whatever reason. The neighboring community, Naren Center, our neighboring First Nations, were never consulted. No one was told, no one was brought into a room and saying, hey, this is what's going on, this is what we're going to be doing. So we immediately put in letters and calls to the ministry of saying, who dropped the ball? Our initial response from them was, was basically, well, we don't have to. Which frustrated, which frustrated our office very, very, very much, and also, I know it also frustrated the township as well, so we pushed even further. There's something wrong with the process where something like this that happens. That there is no consultation. There's a huge problem. If this substance was good. And if there is no issue with it being removed from one location to another. Then there should be evidence, there should be reports, there should be statistics that would be able to reassure us that. If it was good there. And it's gonna help us here, show us that evidence. Everything that has happened tonight could have been prevented. These discussions, these meetings should have happened a long time ago. And again, these are some of the questions that you all have, that you put into our office, and that we're gonna try our best to find you the answers that you're looking for. But what I would ask everybody here tonight. Let's keep our calm down. Let's try and listen to what's going to be shared. Let's try and listen to the questions, because we need to do our job up here and absorb that information. If we're throwing stones and yelling at each other, we're not gonna be very constructive and very diligent in the job that we need to do. Ultimately, at the end of the day, we want answers. We want information. We want our homes, we want our communities, we want our lives, and we want our childrens to be safe today, tomorrow, and for years to come. And ultimately, that's why I'm here this evening, is to answer or try to answer some of those questions. I've shared a lot of information already with the township in regards to correspondence that I've sent. To the Ministry of Transportation, to the Ministry of Mines, to the Ministry of Environment. And I'm waiting for answers to come back. The latest answer that I did receive was actually on Monday from the Minister of of Mines, which is George Perry. He absolutely categorically avoided the question of consultation and why they dropped the ball on that. He basically responded to me is that everything that we're doing is top-notch. Everything that we're following through as far as safety procedures, that's being done, and we have spoken to the neighboring communities. Well, I regret to inform you that. I've sat with the leadership here in there in center, I've sat with the leadership in Espinola, I've sat with the leadership in the neighboring First Nations communities, and they have not been consulted. And these are the questions that we have, that we wanna put, and that we're hoping that we're gonna get some answers. That the studies. That they claim that this is safe. Is gonna be provided. So again, I wanna encourage everybody, let's try and keep cool, let's try and keep calm. And let's make sure that we have a good meeting tonight. Thanks for having me.
Okay, we move on to Dr. Adriana Chenier, representing MP Carol Hughes.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Adrianne Chenier, uh, and I'm representing Carol Hughes, and I'm here to bring her regrets.
My name's Adrianne Chenier, uh, I'm here representing Carol Hughes, she sends her regrets, she is at this moment in Montreal with the MDP Caucus. What she did wanna say is that uh, she has been, just like uh, and you've mentioned, she has been in communication with the leadership of the townships. And in fact, as a result of some of the advocacy that has been going forward, she sent a letter to the Honorable Jonathan Wilkinson, the Minister of Energy and Natural Resources in Ottawa. And we just got a response not long ago, where uh, the Honorable Mr. Wilkinson tells us that the responsibility rightly lies with the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission. And with the, with uh, with the Ontario uh, government as well. However, uh, in my main job, I'm an occupational health and safety specialist, and I very much believe in the rights that people have. Which is a right to know and a right to participate in things that may in fact impact their own health and our safety. And so as part of the delegation tonight, I also urge is uh, Auntie Mata that we ask thoughtful questions to understand exactly what's being proposed. What is already present and what we uh, can expect in the future. With that, uh, one additional thing is from a federal perspective. National truth and reconciliation endeavor is something that uh, we hold very dear to our hearts. And the idea that uh, First Nation communities have not been properly consulted about things that may in fact impact their nations is not really in line. With truth and reconciliation, and we are looking forward to tonight to this opportunity to start bridging them now and to get some information going before this uh, proposal goes through. Thank you.
Now we move on to representatives from the Ministry of Mines and the Ministry of Transportation, I believe they're gonna be doing a joint presentation.
Depending which one, do they have each of my? There we go.
So.
Okay. This one isn't. Uh, which one? It's because the other.
We'll try.
Are you okay to remain situated? Okay. Is their laptop on?
So, hey, everybody, uh, this is John Gado, we see manager with the mineral exploration development section with Ministry Mines. Uh, pleasure to be here tonight, and uh, nice to see that a lot of people came out to listen. And uh. We heard loud and clear. That there were a lot of people here that wanted to listen. But facts, and what? Are we doing about things? Uh, MPP Matt, I just mentioned, you know, past, present, and future, and I think. The information we're gonna present to you guys today. Will help understand what's happening here at the site. Um, I also have here Rob Schreiber. And he's an engineer specialist in tailings. With the Ministry of Mines as well, and he's gonna help fill in where, I mean, has some technical issues, but certainly, you know, uh, the both of us, hopefully, we can ask your questions. Help relay some of the fears that are over there and uh. He brought a presentation, so we will uh, start with that. So, Auntie Matt talked about, you know, past, present, and future, so it's uh. Works well with our presentation, essentially, that's how it's laid out. Um, a little bit of the past. Now, you know, Agulay Mine operated back in the sixties. Um, it was operated by Carradis and Mining. Uh, it was a private entity who operated the mine and developed the tailings management area. Where uranium tailings were deposited. Uh, that's a fact, the mine was existing, uh, they operated, they closed the mine, I think, in nineteen eighty-three, that's what the slide says. And between eighty-three and eighty-eight, they started decommissioning the sites. And in doing so. They closed that tailings facility. Closed out the tailings facility for uranium, um, it was done by engineering firm. It was done on, you know, a site that was suitable. For uranium waste. Um, there were some covers placed. Below and above. The tailings to ensure that seepage, drainage would be well managed for the site. So in nineteen eighty-three and eighty-eight, site was decommissioned. And in the nineties. The government of Ontario inherited the site. So we became the entity that held the license. That would then became responsible for the operation of the site, the care of maintenance, and ensuring that the site was safe. For everybody, including, you know, people using the area for recreational purposes, um, to go onto the sites. For fishing, hunting, whichever, um, the site was designed to be safe. And we'll talk about that. So here's the uh, Agulay Tailings Management Area, you can see that red area down below which is circled, that is the extent of the tailings. Uh, containing the uranium waste. Um, it was constructed nineteen sixty-seven, closed out late eighties, and again, it was, you know, inherited by the government of Ontario in the nineties. Um, it's contained basically animal host. Well, you guys could see that, but there is a dam to the west. And a dam to the east. And through closure, um, if you look over to the right-hand side, there is a spillway for emergency purposes, but that was also maintained as part of the, the whole tailings management area. Um, again, the engineered cover was placed over the tailings area in order to prevent. That radiation from coming off the tails. And uranium is. Does emit radiation, it's natural, it's part of the rock, and so does naomi, so we'll talk about that after. So Agulay Mine, as I mentioned, the Ontario government became owners of the site, which required us to hold the license, which is issued by the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission. Uh, it's a federal entity, and they do have some representatives here today, uh, they come out to sites, they conduct some inspections. And the license requires the government of Ontario to comply with regulated conditions for the license to be held in good standing. Um, as part of that license, it requires us to conduct some annual inspections, and those inspections. Include water sampling, both surface water, ground sampling, uh, groundwater sampling, uh, both upstream and downstream, to ensure that. The site is maintained in a way. That firstly, the cover is in good standing, and that it's not leaching any kind of uranium waste anywhere offsite, so it's within the confined boundaries of the engineered tailings area. Uh, next slide, sorry. Uh, here is a little bit about the license and inspections. Um, so the area that you see, that blue that you see, is a heat map. From the radiation that's coming off the site. And this is part of the inspections that we conduct. We wanna make sure that the site covered, which is the whole area in blue. Um, is maintained in a way which is safe. And in order for us to conduct inspections and ensure that, you know, the site is safe for those recreational users. Uh, because this is groundland after all. So we're not restricting access, there's no gates, uh, there's no barriers, people can go on there and still use the site as they please, um. But the license requires us to do these studies, and one of the studies is one of these studies here that you see, so we test the site. For radiation that is coming off through the tables. As you can see here, and this is from the last inspection that we had. And the red and yellows are the areas of the highest radiation. So you can see there. That we have a couple of areas, I think they're marked A, B, and C, and that. Is the areas that we have the highest radiation numbers. Because the cover material is being eroded. It's a forty-five-year-old site. It has to be maintained, as I mentioned, but over forty-five years, there is windblown. Erosion, there is water erosion, there are plants, there are trees, there's roots, there's animals, so there's erosion that happens naturally. There's also people that access the site. And this is something we're trying to discourage, is ATVs, motorbikes, third bikes, this is after all, an engineered cover. Which has a lot of material that has to be brought in. And is costly, so when we spend the money of the Ontario government to maintain a cover like this, we wanna make sure that it stays. You know, at the most bang for buck, I'd say. So the license is for five years. It was renewed in twenty twenty. And it's only renewed if we meet. The conditions of the license. Now, our license renewal was coming up in twenty twenty-five, so we thought it was a good opportunity. To include some of the materials that NGO will be talking about. In a bit. Now, this material is coming to the sites. It's free. NGO is providing, you know, a lot of engineering and labor and materials. Um, and the area that's gonna be covered with this material is that area that you see that is red. And yellow, and there's a big circle area around it. So that is where. The naopia. Is gonna be placed. Now remember, uranium. Has a much higher rate of radiation. Than naomi, naomi has a low rate of radiation. So in discussions with the Canadian Nuclear. Council, I think our Safety Council. We determined. That the material. That they're gonna bring is within the license degree, so it's designed. It's maintained. And it's within that nuclear license that we hold, and they agreed that this material would be acceptable. To be used as a cover material. Next slide. So a little bit more on the maintenance activities that we've done at sites, you can see that the Ministry of Mines, uh, our inspection teams, our engineering groups, we go to sites. We frequent the site once a year, we sample it once a year, and from that. We obtain, you know, general information on, you know, runoff, groundwater, surface water. And conduct visual inspections on whether the cover. Is well-maintained, if there are areas that require maintenance. Uh, in addition to like replacing signs. Doing, you know, uh, everything that is required in your license, but also, you know, the rest of the studies. Are for our ministries to better understand the site itself, again, we inherited the site, so we didn't create it, we inherited. And we're here to maintain it, keep it safe. And ensure that it can be used by the public as groundland. So again, some of the studies that were done, um, you can tell that there are some in there for radiation surveys, which is the map that you seen that showed those spots. So I know there's a lot of concerns with regards to surface water, drinking water, uh, we've heard. Coming from the, you know, the warships of each one of the townships. Um, we've heard from deputies and MPPs, and, you know, it's. This is something that the Ministry of Mines does all the time. It just so happens this is a site that has a federal license, which is also radioactive. So we get it, it's, it's concerning, um, so. Under a license. There's, there's some work that's to be done. Uh, the license requires us. To do monitoring every five years. But our ministry since twenty fourteen have been monitoring the sites annually. So we conduct annual samples. Both groundwater, surface water. We conduct visual inspections. Some, you know, other studies that you see in previous slides, including some of the radiology. Inspections that we do, um. But all this information essentially is collecting data. We need to understand, you know, this is a site safe, essentially, it's being held by government, so we wanna make sure it's. Um, the studies, and since, like I said, twenty fourteen, we've done annual groundwater, surface water, and what we found is there are no detective impacts. In either John Creek. Which goes directly to Agulay. Or Manistic Creek, which is on the other direction. Where the flow is. So here's a little bit more on the site conditions. Further. So again, the radiation surveys, uh, we did it in two thousand eight, two thousand ten, sixteen, and just recently, where you can see that blue map, and it shows some of those hotspots. Um, the average background levels of radiation at sites. Are point seven three millisieverts per year. That's the background level. So we, we thought maybe we try to put that in context a little bit on what does that mean? Well, essentially, you know, the casual site use of two hundred hours per year. Which is considered acceptable at a majority of the tailings management area. Would equate to about an exposure. Of point one nine millisieverts or one point eight three millisieverts per year. If standing within that red zone, so the thinnest area of the cover. Where you're exposed to the highest radiation levels. For two hundred hours, yeah. So those two specific areas that we talked about, uh, again, so one point eight three would be the worst-case area, if standing at that spot for two hundred hours. Now we'll talk about some of the comparables in the next slide. So here you see some comparable values, I'm sorry, not too familiar with that size, so it's gonna look like here. So that's a scale, that shows you radiation doses, gives you a perspective of, you know, what is safe for what conditions, essentially, so we have the emergency worker. The annual dose limit of about five hundred millisieverts, you know, a five-year dose limit for nuclear energy worker, about a hundred millisieverts. An annual dose. For a regular worker. At the nuclear energy. Plants, I guess, or fifty millisieverts. And then you see the yellows. Yellow boxes show the. Where the millisieverts that were being. Exposed to. So on that side, you can see the radiation doses that you get on everyday stuff, like a typical flight across Canada, chest x-rays. Maybe it's a good time to talk about two, the geology, so geology in Canada, there's natural radiation, it's, it's part of the rock. There's all kinds of rocks that emits radiation, um, uranium, of course, they will be, but there's also other types of rocks that emit radiation, so they have to be. Managed in a certain way, to make sure that. They're safely contained, which is what we have in Agulay Tailings area. So maybe let's. Um, here's a picture of some of the rock that's gonna be coming to sense. It's the naopian waste rock. Uh, and TO is gonna be speaking to where that rock comes from, uh, why the project was initiated, that kind of stuff, but certainly, here's a picture of what would be set the site. And it's gonna be delivered at sites, and again, think that it's, it's a benefit. Not a benefit, but it's also, it's. It's helping us address a concern that's been identified through inspections. So essentially, we have hotspots, and our license says that we need to maintain a cover, which is safe. So this material. Will be brought to sites, will be used as part of the cover, reducing the overall radiation at sites. And this will then be covered with sand. The topsoil re-entertained and sloped appropriately to promote shedding of water. It's forty-five years old, so there are areas where you can see some erosion or settling, uh, so certainly, you know, it requires. Some reshaping to promote that shedding of water. So some of the benefits. Um, the term of the placement of the naopian rock tailings will improve the overall, the overall sites. Again, we have the license, there is a requirement for us to maintain that cover, uh, through the inspections, we found that there were thin areas which are now. Showed in that map that I showed previously, have those red areas, those are the thinnest areas on top cover, so they need to be addressed. And to be clear. If we were to do nothing, the site is still safe. There's no concern. Um. With frequenting the site for hunting, fishing, walking, or whichever it is, the only concern we have is ATVs, motorbikes, whatever, that's just because it's. You know, it, it damages the top, which requires us to fix it. So the material, the naopian, will provide additional radiation shielding in those areas that are to be maintained. On top of that will be twelve to fifteen centimeter fleet material and then topsoil. Um, it's gonna improve. Public access. Because the improvements. The crossing of Manistic Creek, and of course, uh, the new module of the bridge that's gonna be installed, it's for this project. and of course, uh, the new module of the bridge that's going to be installed for this project. The work is being carried out by MTO. It's going to be spread out by MTO, it's going to be shaped by MTO. So the Ministry of Mines, of course, benefits overall because this, we would have to go to a third party. And of course, it improves public safety at sites, addresses the hotspots, which is essentially part of our license, part of this. So. Yeah, last bullet, sorry, I was reading for the first time. Um, the lands remediated at the source of the naobian rock tailings area, which is the MTO project, uh, will be public health and safety benefits made by MTO and Indigenous Services Canada. As I understand, they are partners in this project and so are the Nipis First Nation. Next slide. I think that's it.
Okay, uh, thank you everyone for attending tonight. Uh, my name is Darren Stevenson. And I'm going to fight with this microphone for a while. Uh, I'm an area construction manager with the Ministry of Transportation in our capital program delivery branch. Um, I'd like to share with you a little bit of information about the project and the contract that the Ministry of Transportation has. It's a collaborative, collaborative project, um, as described by Jean, uh, wherein we are doing work at one end, uh, and transporting and positing it uh, on a licensed facility that mines holds a license for. Um, at the Agnew Lake Jones Management Area. So the mine is the, I think, the original name of the mine site that generated this material, it's had multiple names. But essentially, essentially the ministry's work. Good, um, the ministry's, the ministry's work encompasses three separate components. And in their simplicity, that equates to the excavation of the material at the originating end, the transport of the material from the originating end to the receiving end, and the deposition placement, uh, of that material at the Agnew Lake Tailings Management Area. And I apologize for a lot of people fighting with our slideshow as well, uh, so it's a little out of sequence, but, um, you know, essentially it's those three components. We're excavating naobian rock tailings and backfilling three primary areas, in the Nipis First Nation and on the MTO property, uh, and a few residential sites in Nipis where this material had been, uh, used for building purposes. Um, so that work has started, there was approximately 34,000 tons of material being excavated and transported. Um, and, uh, the transportation from the originating sites to the licensed disposal area will be undertaken by, we have 16, uh, triopses ready to, uh, undertake this, this hauling. Um, due to the length of the designated haul route, you know, and time to load these trucks, um, and unload them at this end, um, we anticipate that each truck will only be able to make one trip, uh, and some that the first thing in the morning may be able to make two. So we've got 16 trucks, um, we're indicating about 24 loads a day maybe hauling. And that's simply because we think half of the trucks may be able to make two trips in a day, and others that are making their first trip later in the day, uh, will not have time to get to and from and back. Um, the disposal of rock, uh, and its creating to maintain the existing topography will be done by us. It will be covered with clean material and topsoil and revegetated, um, to, uh, you know, essentially replicate the metal that's there now and to reinstated vegetation that, um, that acts as a deterrent to, uh, wind blown erosion, uh, and water erosion for that matter. So as part of our contract, there's, there's several temporary environmental protection measures undertaken. Um, essentially, the focus of our, um, focus of our contractors to contain this material. Um, we don't want to spread outside the work areas during excavation or hauling or disposal. So, um, all of our work sites have, um, some fence placed around the perimeter, um, to contain that work within the work area. The contractor has initiated transition zones that they identified as, uh, concentrated zones, uh, reduction zones and unrestricted zones. And essentially, um, developed health and safety plans, um, for both their employees and traveling public, um, to, to essentially create that delineation. Um, separation of the transporting equipment, uh, is such that we will only have work, um, being undertaken by equipment that is designated to the excavation sites. It's not leaving those sites until they're being decontaminated. The hauling equipment will not be, um, allowed to leave the site until they are cleaned, decontaminated by the contractor. Um, they have, uh, wands that are taking down those radiations that they use to identify the success and efficiency of their cleaning and decontamination. The slide does indicate that we're retaining all the water used in that contamination. There's been a bit of a, uh, evolution and adaptation of the contractor's initial plans to the point where uh, work that we have started already at the Nipis First Nation and to excavate some of this material, their equipment has been decontaminated using waterless practices. They pivoted, recognized, uh, the block of need to use water. They're using brushes, wipes, uh, pressurized air, lances, things of that nature, uh, quite successfully. And we expect that to continue when it with the some of the other sites, uh, and eventually they need to decontaminate equipment, uh, on the Altman at this end. Um, the hauling is limited to a designated haul route. Um, so again, that's an effort to contain this material so that we know where it is. Um, at the originating sites, our contract prohibits excavation, uh, below the water table. So one of the sites is in very close proximity, uh, feet away from the Nipis. And another site has a small creek that flows through it. Uh, we're creating some separation from the lake and the creek. Uh, but in the excavation of the material, we are not. Those trucks cannot be loaded with a dozer. Uh, they have to be loaded with an excavator which has a smaller bucket and it allows more control of the material to ensure that it gets into the hauling equipment, um, and isn't dispersed outside of that equipment. Uh, project consultation, project was undertaken in consultation with applicable environmental regulatory agencies, uh, over time, including Ministry of the Environment, Conservation of Parks, uh, Ministry of Natural Resources, uh, and the Canadian Safety Commission. Um, as part of our process, we identified potential impacts to the roads on the haul route. Um, then those roads were identified and as a result of that, we have met with the city of Greater Sudbury to talk about that, uh, as well as with the MNR, um, there's a different acronym in this slide deck, but I can't recall if it was MNR and Forests we had at the time, uh, and private road owners as well. Um, we, uh, bit of a missed moment in the slide there where it says that we're working alongside the Nipis First Nation to consult members of the First Nation community. Uh, the community in Nipis has been aware of this material on their property for quite some time. Um, the investigations that we've done on their property have been done with consultation and with their information and participation, but honestly, um, so they're very aware. They've been involved with, uh, other ministries prior to the Ministry of Transportation's involvement. Um, and, and continue to be at the onset of this assignment. Uh, we did have a town hall, uh, conducted at the request of, uh, Nipis First Nation that they're in at the start of this, um, uh, project contract. Uh, and it wasn't the ministry's initiative, but we were there to support them and answer questions. And, um, as you can appreciate at that end, um, most of the information was very well received. Our class environmental assessment process for prevention of transportation facilities, um, is an improved planning process for building and maintaining transportation infrastructure which we followed. Um, it does not require consultation, uh, for, uh, a, a project of this category. It's appropriate to acknowledge, I think the province acknowledges that we likely could have been here sooner and shared information more freely. Um, you know, we cannot do that at this point, but I mean, we're here because we've heard from council and from various other people through the letters that they've written, um, that there are concerns and we want to share, uh, as much knowledge of the project that we're doing as we can to ensure that there's an understanding of what we're doing. Um, and hopefully to answer questions that might alleviate your fears, but at the very least to, to share with you what you're doing. Uh, I think we're aware that in, in the absence of information, that there becomes misinformation. Uh, and we'd like to share with you what we can from a factual perspective. Uh, I guess, uh, essentially, our contract requires and develops, um, as part of the procurement documents, a health and safety plan. And that was provided to, uh, the contractor that did this job. Uh, it's a contract provision that as a minimum, they developed their own health and safety plan that meets our plan as a minimum. And in the sense, um, of our contract, they have developed two separate health and safety plans for their workers, um, to be deployed and employed at both the Nipis First Nation sites and the North Bay site, uh, with the Ministry of Transportation owns, and a separate one on the licensed facility here at the Altman. Um, within the contractor's team, um, we have a health and safety manager, a radiation safety officer, a radiation protection technician. Uh, all this part of the contractor's team. And separate and apart from that, the Ministry of Transportation is part of our oversight team, uh, has retained an environmental qualified person, uh, to be onsite conducting tests of materials that's being extracted, uh, to, to make sure essentially that we get the limits of what we were attempting to, to excavate, uh, on the, um, originating end. Um, the material is basically prioritized based on its concentration of metals and radio of the PIs. And the intent is that, priorities are one, two, three. The intent is that the priority one material with the higher concentrations will be excavated and transported to positive first so that it is, uh, it basically has more cover over top of it, uh, when we're done. Um, all employees on the sites are familiar with that, with the acronym that we're using as a hashtag, but there's actually two of them. Um, and has been required to take, uh, undertake training prior to accessing the source site. Um, in conjunction with that, uh, the contractor has developed a dust management plan because we're very concerned about the migration and it tends to do that when we've got stockpiles of materials. So they have developed the dust management plan, uh, to mitigate that concern uh, and a fairly extensive soils management plan that explains all the different things that they're doing to ensure that they're working safely and that this material, um, is, is essentially being excavated from where we intended to be and hauled safely to its final destination. We are talking about trucks traveling on the designated haul, so we won't dwell on that. So, uh, currently at the Nipis site, so our contract, we're in the midst of our contract. Um, we just haven't started to haul the material that was excavated to the Altman. Um, there's been preparatory site work undertaken, uh, on the Nipis First Nation sites as well as the MTO sites that began, uh, last fall. Because there's multiple sites, it's continuing, they didn't do the preparatory work at all of the sites all at once. Um, excavation of the naobian rock tailings began in, in July of this year. Uh, excavated material at this point is currently being stockpiled, um, at Nipis First Nation until hauling, um, to the TMA can commence. I don't know if you can all read that, but that fraction says today we've done about 75% of the work. Um, that slide deck was prepared about a week ago and since, uh, went back to one of the residential sites and essentially completed that site and have started work at a second site which, uh, is adjacent to, um, an end bridge gas line. Um, at this end, you, you would have had noticed, uh, improvements to the road, so Agnew Lake Road is improved, uh, so that we can maintain it in a better state of repair while we're hauling if we, when we start hauling. At this point, we have developed a laydown area, um, not on the uranium site, but within the licensed area. Um, with the intention of, uh, hauling our material to that so that we can then transport it onto the uranium site and not be dumping it directly in the site. We'll be dumping it offsite and then transporting it to the site. Um, there's a temporary bridge ramps now spanning the Ministick Creek crossing. Um, that will be replaced when we're done by, uh, permanent modular bridge. The existing culverts are still replaced and this temporary bridge spans it. Uh, it's our intent to remove the culverts, there is a disrepair, uh, and leave that modular bridge there when we're done. Um, there is about a 700 meter transition road between the laydown area and the, the Altman itself where we'll be placing this material. And, um, we have started to construct a geotextile layer with a sacrificial layer of granular over top of it, um, just to ensure that we're containing this material and eventually all of that material will also be placed upon and over before we leave. Um, it's important to note, from a project perspective, hauling of the naobian rock tailings to the Agnew Lake Tailing Management Area has not yet commenced. Um, this pending some approvals by CNSC, Ministry of Transportation and our contractor, they're currently developing some responses to questions that CNSC had regarding the soils management plan. Um, and we're in the midst of developing this answer for CNSC at this point. Uh, so this one's pretty simple, I apologize, the text is quite small, but essentially what it says is, what can you expect? So if you do visit the site at either end, you will see workers wearing personal protective equipment, uh, including, uh, coveralls, now these are disposable coveralls, they're not something that the workers are taking home every night, they're used to new wear every night. Uh, and masks, so the masks are intended for respiratory reasons because we're worried about transport uh, and it becoming airborne. Um, people that are in direct contact with it on the work sites will be wearing this equipment, um, um, every day. And the whole intent of that is that they're not transporting this area in their own clothes and, um, respiring. Um, you'll see truck traffic, um, transporting from the originating end to the Tailings Management Area. Those trucks were all very securely parked, um, to ensure, as we already spoke about, the bonding and decontamination process. Um, those trucks are constrained to the designated haul route on public roads. For the most part, those public roads are the province's highway from Nipis First Nation. Um, the designated haul route is entirety of Highway 17 to Sudbury Regional Road 4, which is Fairbank Lake Road, 4 to 5, and then to High Falls Road and on to Agnew Lake Road to the same. Washing and decontamination station, so essentially as already indicated, we're minimizing the washing, um, where the process is, uh, there has evolved to a lot of this porch at this point. Um, and those are located at every excavation site. Um, and, and basically to control the disposal of all the contaminated materials, it says, including water. Where we do generate water, if we, we will contain it and dispose it accordingly. Um, essentially, we're using mine dry trailers. And at first we thought we were going to generate, um, water in, um, you know, showering facilities for staff. Um, this process that they've adopted at the excavating end is such that, uh, staff essentially are stripping down before they enter the trailers, leaving the, the coveralls and, and masks to be disposed of outside. Um, some are not showering, they're going straight home through the trailer, putting their clothes on and going out the other end. Uh, I'm told that those that are showering are not showering because they're, uh, you know, it's about that concern of carrying the stuff on your body home. But rather, uh, when they're using this personal protective equipment, they're completely contained and, and it gets quite hot, quite honestly. So a lot of these people are showering now because they're sweating profusely as opposed to, uh, other concern for them. So we're not going to go into the analyses, there's a lot of extra information in the benefit of the time, uh, let's end it there and turn it over to the most presenter.
Okay, thank you. And now we have Bernine Lloyd. Oh, you're right, correct. So sorry, um, representatives from the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission will pass the mic over.
Uh, I need the other one, thank you though.
Uh, I need the other one, thank you though. He's plugged in, want to just hold that for a second? Thank you. Is it? It's not showing. They're using different sources, they're using this one, yeah. I can move it over to the other one.
No, that's okay, we just need to change it to uh. Should be this. Wait, how to, there we go.
Want to plug, where can we put it? Is there a plug in? Is it that little white one?
Yeah, if if not, there's a power bar, I can plug into it.
Oh, yeah, I wanted to go, okay, because of, yeah, because there's. Yeah. We'll get this rolling anyway.
I hope.
Plug it on the side of? There we go. Is it showing that it's charging? And on a computer? Is it not lit here? So we don't think there's a power to it? It's not, anyway, we'll see. Well, that's our goes. I mean, the power, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yep, there's a light, okay. So, do you want to just take it away or how do you want to get it first? Oh, they know the speaker knows. No, we can send a show number. Oh, I got my phone, hold on. Yeah. Just put it on. Can you read it? Yeah, make it. So you're gonna click it forward then? I will try to click it. Here, but we're both in front. Just another. Exactly.
Already?
Okay, yeah.
All right, we're starting here today or tonight, thank you for inviting us. To your town hall, we were in town um conducting an inspection at the Agnew Lake Tailings Management Area. Uh, yesterday, so this is timely in that we were able to uh extend our stay for another month. To make sure that we can attend this session. Uh, my name is Maria Healy, I'm a project officer with the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission. I work under the Uranium Mines and Mills Division. And um, I'm the project officer for the Agnew Lake Tailings Management Area Site. It's it's a waste nuclear substance licensed site. So you'll hear all of these big long words. Well, uh, we usually pare it down to saying it's a WNSL. So that's the type of CNSC license that has been issued to the Ministry of Mines, they are the licensed holder, okay? That's just a little bit of a background. Um. So, I'm just, oh yeah, you you've heard this already, but I'll just say it anyway. Before getting into the presentation, CNSC staff was to acknowledge that the project that I am talking about is located in Northern Ontario. It's in the Climen Township, fifty kilometers west of Sudbury, twenty-five kilometers northwest of Central Ontario. In an area that I'm sure everybody here knows more about and is more familiar with than I am. I've come here for the last three years doing inspections. And so I've grown to to be more familiar with it, but certainly not, it's not my backyard, it's it's not where I live or where I grew up. So I really appreciate um all of your experience and the touch it to be there. I also like to acknowledge that this territory is covered by the Robinson Huron. And Robinson Superior Treaty's territory and that the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe peoples. Next slide please. Now I'm starting to realize that um our coffee wouldn't have been helpful. About this technology.
It's on that screen. No, our speaker notes are.
Oh, okay, so. I'm not going to read every point on the slide, I I can certainly do that if you can't see it, I'll go back and read it. But first, I just briefly wanted to go through two important aspects of the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission, so that's the CNSC's. Mission, which is the regulation of the development, production and use of nuclear energy. To protect the health and safety of people and the environment. This includes the regulations of the entire fuel cycle. From mining uranium ore to the management of waste. And so the division that I'm working with right now is mostly um focused on the front end of the fuel cycle and the very. End of the fuel cycle. So right now I'm a project lead for a new proposed uranium mine in Mount Saskatchewan. But I'm also looking after this project here, which is a decommissioned site, so it's at the end of the fuel site. We also disseminate scientific, technical and regulatory information concerning the activities of CNSC. And the effects on the environment, on the health and of the safety of persons. Of the development, production, possession, transport and use of nuclear substances. Okay. We uh, it it's important to understand that um we're actually not a federal government department. We're a commission, okay, and so we are at arms reach. We are independent from all levels of government, which means that the minister in Ottawa. Or the MPP at the Queens Park or City Hall or Town Council aren't able to influence our work on nuclear safety. The same is true for industry, we take in all the facts we need and come to independent conclusions. Even if that means industry has to spend a bit more time and money. Or even if our licensees have to do that, where our focus is on this on safety. And so, um, I guess what I could say is is that. I'm a middle person, I take all of the information. And with my colleagues and specialists at the CNSC, we go to a body of people called the Commission. And we advise, we we make a recommendation to the Commission on whether or not to issue a license to the licensed applicant. And and typically all of those licenses that people get or companies get. Come with a a fake long lasting conditions. Okay, it's not like just getting your driver's licensing and uh driving out the back door. It uh comes with a lot of responsibilities and license conditions. A lot of these license conditions are um. Published in something called a license condition handbook. That I'm going to need to. Do not. This slide here is, it's just a general slide, I think I I alluded to it earlier, it just. In case the CNSC regulates all nuclear facilities and activities. Um, you're probably hearing our name in the news a little bit more now because. We are in this uh period of time called perhaps a nuclear renaissance, where you might be hearing more and more people speaking about small modular reactors. Okay, so we worked on that, but we also issued licenses for um. Medical instruments, okay, or for nuclear gauges. Uh, so for tools that are used uh in industry, so it's not just mining, it's also all of these other areas. We also issue licenses for transportation if the nuclear substance is within a certain uh criteria that's um. Uh, within some other federal statutes. It all stems from, our statute is called the Nuclear Safety Control Act and all of our regulations flow through that act. And that's where we're from. Um. I think I covered that, uh. No. So, next slide please, CNSC staff, this is what I was talking about, we we're over uh nine hundred and fifty people. They have different areas of expertise, we're very interdisciplinary, um. Group of people that all work together. I have three of my, three of our specialists here tonight, uh, we have, uh, I'm a generalist, I guess you could say. So uh, I reach out to my specialists as well. When I get a lot of the feedback from our licenses or when the licensees are required to put together studies. I'll review the study and make sure that our experts as well take a look at that and oftentimes. There's quite a bit of back and forth between uh what we've recommended and what our specialists recommend or findings of clarification or additional work. To be conducted and studied so that we can ensure that we're making the right decisions to protect Canadians. Um, just see if I'm missing something here. Our work includes developing and implementing the rules for nuclear activities in Canada and making sure that the nuclear operators in Canada abide by the rules. This includes inspections and our inspectors come with some significant powers in case we need them, we have a lot of tools. To enforce. Compliance under the Nuclear Safety and Control Act. And we use them when we need to. We engage with indigenous nations and communities and with the public about our work. And we present our findings and recommendations to people who make decisions about licenses. That's our independent commission. Or for the Agnew Lake Tailings Management Area and ways of nuclear substance license. An officer designated by the commission to make decisions. And again, when necessary, we take enforcement actions against licensees to bring them back into compliance. We track these actions until they are completed. Okay, and there's all different levels of that, typically from uh an inspection if we go on site, there might be some recommendations that we make. Uh, our licensees take those recommendations quite seriously. In other cases, we may issue something called a noncompliance. Okay, so they're out of compliance with their license or with their license condition attached to that license. So for example, we may ask our license or order our license, license C. To repair signs, radiological sign, radiation protection warning sign. Okay? That have weathered, so that this is maintenance, but if the licensee hasn't taken on that. Responsibility to maintain the site in that level, then we'll be certain to, when we're on site, to to follow up with their inspection reporting that requires them. Mandates them. To change that signage. And, oh yes, and the other thing I'd like to mention is. We also do something called, I don't know if people are familiar with this, we did quite a bit of this in the Elliott Lake region. It's called uh independent environmental monitoring programs. So we implement those, we oftentimes refer them as I E M P. These are programs that are um under our enforcement tools. These are our programs where we go out to the community and we test just those areas that the community may have concerns for. So it's outside of the license boundary, when I go to do an inspection, I'm not crossing over that boundary, okay? People are given an uh issued a license within the license boundary. But as this community has already indicated, you're concerned about whether or not any um substances are being released into the environment past that imaginary line. Into your community, into your waters, into your streams, into your groundwater or what have you. So we actually send out uh teams of experts, teams of scientists that go into um comprehensive um environmental monitoring. To test these sites and and then we report back on those. It's actually um. Quite a complex process. And we don't go to to the same communities all the time, this is across Canada. So what we've actually uh started to do is to start to talk with our teams. In CNSC to put in our special request. To have Agnew Lake Tailings Management Area um license to be included. In the next I E M P campaign for Elliott Lake. Which is um tentatively scheduled for next summer. So we're pushing for that on our end and uh we'll keep everybody informed if that's happening and if it is. Then you'll you'll start to hear from us as to whereabouts some of the communities, we'll be setting up our testing example. Programs, okay? Next. And I will pass it over to my colleague Dana Pendelphi. Who is the senior uh project officer and inspector. And um she has transferred to her phone. Thank you. Thanks Maria, and thanks everybody, and thank you for giving us the opportunity of speaking tonight. Um, in addition to being uh with the CNSC for a number of years. As well as an inspector, I'm I'm a native of Timmins, Ontario, so. I'm uh, and my heart is with the northeastern Ontario, and has always been, I've been raised uh in Timmins, so. Uh, I've got a lot of legs to the community, these communities, because I understand. Uh, where you're located, how it's how it's different, how resources is basically the. Uh, the forefront of the economy, uh, I come from a long line of family and members who are minors. So I I get the regions. So uh, let's talk about our regulatory oversight. Um, so every licensee uh gets inspected. Uh, depending on the risk level of the site, uh, the frequency is different. So for a site such as Agnew, when there's nothing going on in Agnew, it's once every three years. But now with proposed work, uh, we've been going much more frequently, uh, we've been going for the past. Uh, since twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty, last year we went and we just literally, as Maria mentioned, were there yesterday. Uh, for our inspections, so during our inspections, we cover a number of areas from radiation protection. To environmental protection, we take water samples uh while we're in site, we take um contamination. Samples if there's places to take uh contamination samples to check for radiation levels. Uh, we walk the site, we take radiation measurements, we have instrumentation with us, we go on inspection to see what's. Is going on at the site, um, we speak to the workers in the sites and we take pictures and we. Have discussions and then provide uh the licensees with uh an inspection report. Which covers all of the areas that we covered during the inspection. And if there's any notices and noncompliance, as Maria mentioned, or recommendations. Uh, we issue those in our inspection report and we expect the licensees to provide corrective actions as soon as possible. Uh, in addition, we review, every licensee has to provide an annual report. Um, so. Every, and normally it's the end of March for the decommission sites. So then March every year, every licensee provides reports and in those reports, there's information about the monitoring they've done for the year. Um, sampling, any inspections they've done on their own, any repairs. Any changes to their site that's reported in the report, we review these reports. Um, as part of one, as part of the other requirement as well. Um, we put those into our own regulatory oversight reports, which is later on in another slide.
That was Dana, by the way.
That was Dana.
Inspecting.
Um, so. I'm not going to go over the history too much on Agnew Lake, because the the ministry's already covered it. Um. But we, as I indicated, it's a passive site, it's a decommissioned site. Um, right now there is a bit more activity as both preparations being done, stockage of materials being done, no Niobian going to site at this time. Um, as well, there's been some improvements to groundwater sampling laws. Um, as well, there's been some improvements to groundwater sampling laws. So a lot of them were, had been there since like the nineteen eighties, so they weren't working uh, or working at all really. Um, so they've been replaced or remediated to be able to get a lot better groundwater samples out of the water. Um, if so aside from that, aside from putting up new signage, uh which we saw yesterday, um, the proposed work uh was initially made as an application proposal to the C N S C in twenty nineteen. Uh, staff reviewed it uh with our, with the help of our specialists. Um, we had a number of comments, there was a lot of back and forth. The license was renewed and amended to be able to take the proposed material on site in mid uh twenty twenties, so July twenty twenties, when that amended license was issued. Um, and we, we gave uh the licensee five years to complete the project. As we all know, the pandemic would have been a slow down on any project. Uh, forget something of this nature. So, we're currently reviewing um the, the soil, the plans that have been proposed um by the ministries. If, for whatever reason, this, the niobium project doesn't go through, we at the C N S C want to make sure that the areas where the radiation doses are higher are still covered. At the end of the day, that's an action that we put on the licensee. So, if it's niobium, if it's other material, those areas have to be patched, have to be repaired, have to be regraded to ensure that the dose levels decrease. As I indicated earlier, we have been on site uh for inspections much more recently. Um, we've reviewed the, the transfer plans. So we at the C N S C don't regulate naturally occurring radioactive material, which is what the niobium is. Um, as Maria mentioned, we regulate uh material that's part of the fuel cycle. So anything that's in line with the purposes of using it, using the nuclear energy or for any area such as medical um, medical isotopes um for X-ray machines, anything of that nature, that's something we regulate. But norm, so material that's naturally occurring, that isn't part of the fuel cycle, we don't regulate. That's on for the ministry, it's for the province that that material is located in, as well as Health Canada is also um responsible for naturally occurring uh radioactive material. Next slide. So as I mentioned um about the annual reports, so every licensee provides their annual reports. And for the active sites, so we have uh active uranium mines in Saskatchewan, we have the power reactors in Pickering and um Dargington and southern Ontario, um as well as we have other facilities across the country, um research labs and universities, things of that nature. So the C N S C provides uh what we call a regulatory oversight report. And because we're going to talk about our division, uranium mines and mills provides one annually. Uh, all of the active uranium mines are reported in it annually. But in the case of decommissioned sites, we do have a number of them across the country, um not just here in Ontario. Um, we report on those every three years unless something, unless there's a change in the activity that would require us to report on it more frequently. So this year um is the year that we're covering all of the sites, from the active mines to the decommissioned sites. And so we are presenting this report uh in, on January twenty-nine, twenty, twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five, so next January. Um, it's going to be presented before our commission in what we call a commission meeting. So a commission meeting isn't a licensing uh hearing, it's just a meeting to disseminate information. So staff presents on uh the report, gives a summary, uh talks about all the sites that are presented in the report. Um, people can join in. Uh, we do welcome interventions. Um, so you can go to our website and if you want to fill the commission date. Um, I, I live near Agnew Lake. Uh, we have some issues with this. We, we welcome these interventions. The commission wants to hear from members of the public. And so that way, you can put in your questions. Uh, it is being presented in Saskatoon in January, because we have another licensing hearing that's been before. Um, but people can join virtually, uh it's a hybrid meeting, virtually via Zoom. And there's always a link provided on our website. And it tells you how to join and if you want to put in your interventions or anything like that. Next slide. So, and I think it's been said a few times. So the Agnew Lakes, Agnew Lake site is licensed by the C N S C and will continue to be licensed by the C N S C. Um, and it is safe for casual use. And by casual use, if you're walking on it, if you're hunting in the area, that's fine. But the minute there's an A T B, you're taking a chance on destroying the cover. In addition, there's signage there for a reason. Every time we go on inspection, the, we note that there's a bunch of signs missing. And we would appreciate if people, I'm sure, I'm sure it's great to have a sign that's got the radiation symbol. And you know, you have it in your basement and it's a talking piece. But we would appreciate if it just stayed there, because it is to tell people what the site formerly was. It's it's safe to, to walk around, it's safe to, you know, do activities you want to do, take a stroll, but if the signage isn't there, then some people will just think that it's a nice open field and they'll, you know, they'll take their side by side or they'll take their A T B and they'll just go out. And we just don't want that. We'd appreciate if people could just keep the signs there. Don't shoot the signs. It, it, it's just, you know, the signs are there for a reason. It's, it's just to inform people of what the site formerly was. Also, again, we recommend we, we uh we're happy to take any questions at the end, after everyone else is obviously presented as well. Um, for ceux who have questions in French, I'll put your place in to explain the nuclear system with a little terminology a bit loose, but I'll try to take questions in French. So again, uh we thank you so much for talking to us today. And uh again, if you have any questions, we've got, on our website, we've got a number of links. If there's other questions, you're happy to be able to provide any information. We don't have it right now, if it's data you're looking for. Uh, you know, send questions to the, to the council and we'll be happy to provide the information as soon as possible. Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll take a uh five to ten minute break, stretch our legs and uh reconvene. I believe there's snacks or coffee or some refreshments in the back and washrooms are over there. Main train's just made from North Bay, so I'll pass it over.
Thank you for the introduction and thank you for the invitation. And I'm gonna pit low we talk, because I'm juggling multiple pieces of paper as is my, as is my habit. So um I'm going to just outline some of the findings that we had uh as a result of a review of a regulatory oversight report some years ago. Uh, it was a twenty seventeen report that we reviewed in twenty eighteen. The C N S C describes these regulatory oversight reports. The report that we reviewed in twenty eighteen is the last report that covered the uh, the, the closed mines. Um, I just went through to check today and I looked at twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty tw- oh, there wasn't one in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And they covered only the operating mines. So my information isn't the most current, but it's the most recent in terms of information uh that's available to the public about these sites. I'm glad to hear, I'm pleased to hear that there's going to be a regulatory oversight report uh released in, for, to the commission meeting in twenty twenty uh five. That report will also not be current, because there's always a lag. So when we, what we reviewed in twenty eighteen was from twenty seventeen, talking about twenty sixteen largely. So we're still gonna have a lag. So we still need, you know, to look at some ways to improve this communication channel and the information flow. So I'm gonna just walk through just some, some key points. And I'm not a technical expert. We were fortunate that we did have some technical help with this review that we did a number of years ago. But just uh, uh, I want to just put out first that I think that there are two significant issues. We're here tonight because of the issue of the import of the niobium from uh, from, from the site uh in Nibising District. But the other issue is the condition of the Agnew Lake mine site itself. And I think that that is something that uh, you know, uh, I guess is the gift of this uh concern over the import of these materials. The gift is that we're all becoming a little bit more aware and paying a bit more attention to the condition of that site itself. And I think the condition of the site, unless it improved dramatically since nineteen, since the twenty uh seventeen report, the condition is problematic. And I'm gonna talk just a little bit about that. So those site conditions, um in that twenty eighteen report, twen- twenty seventeen report, we reviewed in twenty eighteen, um, it reported, and the C N S C has some very broad ways that they report on uh projects or activities or sites in their reports. And one of the ways is they say it's below expectations, that's satisfactory. The Agnew Lake site was below expectations. It's not often that the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission identifies something as being below expectations. So if, if, if a facility or a site is below expectations, it means we really need to pay attention. And that said, it was below expectations during a twenty fifteen inspection. So that'll be ten years by the time this, you know, next regulatory oversight report goes to the commission. During the twenty fifteen inspection, C N S C staff found sections of the tailing areas were exposed. That means that the radioactive materials below are open to the elements, are open to the environment. Um, tailing areas were exposed where the tailing management area cover, T M A, the tailing management area cover had degraded and some locations measured dose rates of greater than one millisievert. Well, they say greater than one millisievert, because one millisievert is the, is the dose that's allowed for the public. There's no level of exposure that doesn't have some attendant risk associated with it. But the C N S C has set levels and the level for acceptable to the C N S C, acceptable exposure to a member of the public is one millisievert. We heard from, I think it was, I think it was M and D M was telling us about, they told us about the five millisievert level for workers and the uh, I think it was fifty in some cases and a hundred in an emergency. Well, under an emergency, you can have very high levels of exposure that are still within the regulatory limits. Um, but they didn't, I don't think they mentioned that the public exposure limit is one millisievert. So that's, so that's the context, greater than one millisievert, they say. In twenty sixteen, M and D M conducted a down gamma dose rate survey and public dose assessment of the Elliott, uh, the Agnew Lake Tailing Management Area and found incremental dose rates ranged from zero, good, to eight point one millisieverts with an average of one point zero eight five millisieverts. So eight, that's eight times the level of exposure permitted for the public. That's almost twice as much as, as, as allowed for a nuclear energy worker. The difference is a nuclear energy worker is monitored. As a member of the public, we're not monitored. So those are the, those are, and those are the rates per hour. So, uh, that causes us a great degree of concern about this site. We're concerned about the overall stability of the site. And we're concerned about the level of oversight being provided at the, at the Agnew Lake site. The level of oversight from the C N S C and the level of management by the M and D M. And sorry, I'm gonna keep coming to M and D M. I know we lost a couple of those letters. It's just a history of mines now, but that's another old habit. Um, so it's a particular concern for us for two reasons uh in terms of public exposure. One is that that area had been subject to a, a, a level of mineral exploration activity. I don't know the exact, but I know we had a concern that we flagged at the time when we were reading exploration reports that they seem to be in the proximity, or perhaps in the same area as the Agnew Lake Tailing Management Area. I was never able to discern that. It's also an area that's used recreationally and for hunting. So that is an area that the public should have the information if they're going to be exposed to radiation eight times the allowable level for the public. We should know, you should know. There should be signs. If the signs come down, the signs should go back up. There should be communication to the local area about that. And I don't believe that that's happened. So that's the first set of concerns is about that, is, is about the site itself and those site conditions. And I haven't heard anything this evening that says that the remediation has taken place. At the time of the twenty eighteen uh review, um we were, well, I'll, I'll come to that in, in more detail in a minute. But we were told that the import of the niobium tailings from, from, from Yallic and Bocage were to address this problem. And given that that import hasn't happened, I'm not really thinking that the remediation has happened. So we've gone all of those years with those disturbances that the tailings covered and those levels of exposure. So that's the one concern. Then the other concern is the proposed import of the niob- uh, of the niobium from um, from Yallic. And uh in the twenty eight, twenty seventeen report, it stated almost as if in passing that M and D M was proposing to transfer the historic mine waste, uranium mine waste from Nova Bocage to Agnew Lake. And what they wrote in the report at the time was repair the cover of the T M A, Tailing Management Area, is planned and M and D M has proposed to add niobium ore and tailings classified as naturally occurring radioactive materials from the former Bocage Tailing Mine near North Bay to cover these tailings. M and D M has proposed that the placement of the niobium waste will provide shielding of the existing tailings and soil cover above the niobium waste will prevent contact with the niobium waste and reduce gamma doses to background levels. So that's what M and D, uh, M D M has and M T O have described, that there will be a level through the tailings, then they'll put a cover of the, the, the uh waste, uh, the mine waste from from Nibising, and then they'll have a soil cover on top. So that's consistent with what we heard then. But we had a concern at that time, and we wrote about this in our submission to the C N S C at that time. Um, we have concern overall about the unlicensed uh and un- unlisted uranium mine sites in northeastern Ontario. But we had a concern about this particular project um because with insufficient information about the waste materials from those sites in Nibising area, from the former Nova Bocage Mine, uranium ore in site. We heard tonight there's three sites actually, um, or the plans for the full remediation of the site. Uh, note that uh in that report at that time, the report presents an assumption of the waste that they would be transferred to Agnew Lake. But around the same time, Rio Algomes uh Operating Care and Maintenance twenty seventeen annual report, which we looked at because when we were commenting on this, this report, we were commenting not just on Agnew Lake, but also on the Elliott Lake site. And Rio Algomes said that. They indicated that the tailings from Nova Bocage uranium mine may be relocated to the Pronto Mine site. I don't know that that would be any better or any worse, but just to note that um, this evening we've heard it, you know, quite definitely that Agnew's the site, uh, a different only site, but back at the time of that report, uh, Pronto was also uh on the list. And I'm not endorsing a move to Pronto instead of Agnew. Um, and I, I want to say that we really support Nibising First Nations efforts to get these sites cleaned up. We think it's important. We think they've been waiting over decades. Uh, so we support that. Um, but we don't support going ahead with a project without enough information and analysis. We didn't have enough information and analysis. And in twenty eighteen, we had technical help that could actually look at that information and do, you know, do a solid critique. Um, but I don't even know that CNFC has that information. They may, they may not, but it's certainly not been not been disclosed. So that, um, information, insufficient information uh, is a concern. The review was done for us by Hutchinson Environmental Science, and they found that the review overall CNSC reports lack sufficient details and supporting information. But they flagged specifically unresolved potential sources of contamination at Agnew Lake uh, included ongoing care and maintenance of the Agnew Lake's tailing cover, potential environmental effects of surface water near the tailing management area, and unknown effects from the potential import of tailings from the Bocage mine. Now, our consultants weren't able to say that there were wicked problems. They were able to say, they could only say that they couldn't tell if there was problems because there was insufficient information. I expect that if CNSC had that information at that time, it would have or certainly should have been included in the report. But it was not. Whether the information is available now and how you as residents in the area will access that information, uh, I can't, you know, I can't say. Um, it was, uh, our consultants did say that it was clear from the import from the report. Uh, if CNSC had sufficient information to understand site conditions and conduct appropriate follow-up, uh, because the evaluation was fully substantiated. Sorry, that's why everybody can hear my ringtone kind of makes me dance. Um, so, uh, so, uh, you know, in, you know, just, just to summarize that, um, we don't think that at that time, CNSC had that information. Uh, if they have the information, if they've done an analysis, if they've looked at the cumulative or synergistic effects, if they've looked at other effects, other issues that might be created by the import of these tailings, um, then we'd like to know, uh, and we'd like you to know. So, um, those doses, uh, I think I've already touched on, um, but those dose levels of eight point one millisieverts um, are high. Uh, and CNSC reported um, that the plan was to cover with the neopium tail covers as naturally occurring radiation material, and then it would shield the existing tailings and soil cover the neopium waste and reduce the gamma doses to background. But again, the question is, it really reduced? Yes, I expect it will. Any shielding? Any shielding is a block between the radioactive source and you and the environment. So it should shield, but I don't know. Because we didn't, we didn't, you know, that information just, um, simply wasn't there. I just want to share a couple of the comments that our our consultants uh, made specifically on, and this was on the um, compliance, CNC, compliance inspection report, um, from uh, twenty eighteen that we asked them to review as part of their uh, overall technical review. Um, again, they have flagged, CNSC had flagged, um, that there were areas that there were both background. I found it interesting, the CNSC report in twenty eighteen said background with a point stick five, but we heard today that background is point seven three, which means background's going up. Now, that could be a different way of calculating. That could be a a change in background radiation at the site. I don't know, but it just, I thought it was interesting that we have two agencies and two different numbers for what background radiation is. But I also want to say we're sometimes told about background as if to say, well, that's background, that's background radiation. We're always in background radiation. But background radiation and an extra source of radiation is additive. So it's not like we can dismiss background radiation as if it's not part of the picture. It is part of the picture. And it's not to say that background radiation, um, doesn't have uh, some potential for uh, a physical effect on you. Um, so, um, CNSC reported resolution on these. They said areas with radiological readings above five millisieverts should be added to the cover repair work planned at the Agnew Lake mine in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. I don't know if that work happened. Maybe Maria or or Dana could tell us. But the summary was compliance expectation not met. New radiation warning signs were posted throughout the site advising the public of hazards on the site. Compliance expectation met, but then just heard recently that the sign's been replaced. That's good. But I think again, it needs to go beyond just, it needs to go beyond just signs, just signs. Um, comment from our consultant was the inspection report did not address the questions or comments for CNSC, uh, including identifying and mitigating cover degradation causes, potential eroded material fate, and effect on receptors. That's on the receivers, those in the environment who are going to feel the effects of those uh, releases. Um, and uh, and why degraded cover was allowed to persist since twenty sixteen, how planned remediation, well, twenty sixteen, but maybe allowed to continue to twenty twenty four. Um, uh, how planned remediation using other tailings when it will ensure receptors are protected, and how the current assessments will remain pertinent after the addition of Bocage mine tailings uh, in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. That was the projected time. And the question our consultant said was, how will CNSC address the concerns identified? Well, I can tell you as as an organization that that commented on that, they haven't addressed them. And that's just the nature of the process. You work hard, you put in comments, and that's it. Um, we haven't heard back. Uh, and we haven't had another regulatory oversight report that included the 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 uh, closed mines since that time. Um, so I think those are the problems that I see with the site, and they are gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna lock in together. Um, the other problems, of course, are the system problems. Uh, and I think you've experienced that here with the lack of consultation, even the lack of notice. Um, but there's system, I would call them system failures. No disrespect to our colleagues from CNFC, MTO, MNDM. Um, but there are system failures. Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission is the regulator. We heard about the license, we heard about the license condition, license condition handle. We heard that there are license conditions, but those license conditions have not been met. For years, they have not been met. I'm gonna try to get the names right. Ministry of Mines, they're the site owner, they're the licensee, they're responsible for the site. And if issues were, serious issues were identified a decade ago, and they haven't been remediated. That, I believe, is system failure. And uh, I think it's very challenging for, you know, the township, as a small township, for us as residents, it's very challenging for us to try to correct these problems. But I think we have to try to correct these problems. I think we have to support the employees of these agencies in correcting these problems. So I think, you know, in terms of what comes next, I think you need to satisfy your concerns. I think you need to look to these agencies to respond to your concerns and to give you very specific and direct and detailed answers and give you time to consider them. I think that you need to be engaged in the decision-making. The township, at least on behalf of the residents, needs to be involved in the decision-making. We heard from the CNSC that the decisions get made by the commission. Well, some of the big, I'll call them the big licenses. The big licenses go to the commission. Many licenses, many decisions are made by designated officers, staff within the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission. I didn't see a notice for this license going to the commission in twenty twenty, and I'm pretty sure it would stand out to me, for me. I'll go back and look. Uh, I'll certainly look for a notice of this license going to the commission. At the commission for license hearing, we have an opportunity to intervene. We can put in written submissions, you can go and you speak to the commission. At the meetings where the regulatory oversight reports go, we don't have an opportunity to speak. We have an opportunity to put in written comments, but we don't have an opportunity to speak. So I'm pleased to hear that there's a license renewal coming up in twenty fif- in twenty twenty five. And I think that we were given the impression that those decisions go to the commission. So maybe this time it's going to be different, and maybe the license for this site is going to go to the commission, and we should intervene. And if a license goes to the commission, there's participant funding. There was participant funding for the regulatory oversight report. Um, but that funding up, winding window closed in in July, and we didn't, wouldn't do an application. So we will be intervening, but we won't have technical assistance this time because we don't have funding. But there is a special funding pocket or envelope, I think they call it, in the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission for regulatory matters, which we haven't ever acted, but I think the township can. And I know the township has the contact information for Adam Levine, and I think he's the person you should speak to about getting uh, some funding, special funding to support the township in this review process, in hiring some technical experts and helping you make your interventions, helping you track through the process, and engaging in the process. And I'm also pleased to hear that there's an independent environmental monitoring program, potential addition for the Agnew Lake site. Um, and it sounds like that's coming up in twenty twenty five. So that's another reason that the township should receive some financial support from the CNSC to assist and support you in getting your input into how that environmental monitoring program uh, is 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 established. So I don't know how long I've spoken, probably too long, but thank you very much for your attention. And uh, I'm certainly sitting here, you all are here.
Okay, so we're gonna hear from Sam Gilchrist. If they wanted to come up.
Can I go to the?
Yeah, absolutely.
Evening, folks. My name is Sam Gilchrist. I'm the executive director of Wapoalaheh Meaton, an Indigenous mental health and addictions program on Manito Island. My board of directors is the sixth chief of the local First Nations on Manito Island. Someone right here tonight. And in addition to that, I'm also the trapper for EP thirty eight, where the uh, disposal of the tailings is set to occur. Let me begin by saying, I want a proper cover over top of that, whatever happens. Uh, I also want Nipissing to be able to clean up their areas as well. Uh, I can't imagine what you folks are going through over the past number of years since I've been in this area. I've grown an amazing attachment to the area, so it, uh, I can't imagine what you're feeling because I know for myself that this has been a huge struggle. Uh, out of nowhere, I've been uh, forced to become a layman expert in nuclear systems. Uh, it's super scary. I've had to look at, you know, do I need to buy a gangrel counter? Do I need a personal radiation safety device to to be out there while I'm trapping? Uh, much like you, uh, I didn't know what was happening. I saw increased traffic out there. I thought they're opening Shakespeare back up. That's that's what I assumed, that there was more traffic to the mine. Uh, and then all of a sudden, there was a highway, I didn't know where, uh, going up into the bush. Uh, I had the opportunity to attend the last council meeting, uh, where the FTO presented as well, and they said there'd always been a road there. Uh, maybe there was a four-wheeler trail. I didn't see anything. Uh, I don't know how work was being done to to get up there, to provide that cover and to put it on there. It seems perhaps it wasn't. Uh, there's, I I don't have anything to present to you. I don't have a PowerPoint here. I just have questions, and so I hope you indulge me for a moment. Uh, there was no notification, you know, typically as a trapper or as an Indigenous organization or as Indigenous communities, there's notification done. There's notification done to Indigenous communities when new roads signs are put up. There's notification done when there's aerial spraying. And there was absolutely no notification done to this area, which, if we look at section thirty five of the Supreme Court, says there has to be consultation with Indigenous communities, and there absolutely was not. To say that there is a consultation done, uh, and that you spoke to Nipissing First Nation is completely disingenuous. Obviously, they're going to be for it. It's being removed from them. There's also a financial component to it for their limited partnership with Miller, Miller Nipissing that's happening. Uh, I don't see Nipissing here. I don't see ISK here, who is also funding it. I think that they should have been here as well to talk about some of these pieces, uh, and so that we could have an informed dialogue with it as well. If they're the only place that was consulted, maybe they should have been here to talk about some of that. Uh, but it also doesn't make sense just consulting with that one community. Uh, it doesn't mean that they speak speak for a pan-Indigenous approach to all of Ontario either. And I think our ministry partner. The previous meeting, I also heard a lot about, you know, it's just norm, it's just naturally occurring radioactive material. It's just niopium. Maybe it is, but I don't know what happened in nineteen fifty at the Bocage mill. I don't know what safety standards were there. It's only open for eight months. It must not have been the best place operating around. So I'm I'm concerned about this. If it's not water soluble, how are we washing it off? I I don't, I'm not a scientist. It just doesn't make sense. I hear that we're not anymore, that we're blowing it off and different things, but we still have to have dust screens and all those things. So what are soluble yet? We have to move it away from Nipissing Lake. We can't go below the water table. We have lots of concerns. If it needs to be removed or eradicated, then it's concerning. But if it's nothing, if it's just norm, if it's just niopium, just leave it where it is, or put it back in the MTO gravel pit that was taken from. If you're vegetating the top cover, uh, I have concerns that I don't know if this makes sense or not, but about bioaccumulation and the animals there. Uh, we hunt moose in that area, or some deer, I don't know, I've never seen, but apparently there's deer. Uh, I'm concerned about going into the water, so I trapped beaver up there, like, uh, I I have a lot of concerns about this. And I didn't see any data around that. And I I was gonna talk about this later, but thank you, Northwatch, like, I, you know, trying to make sense of all this. And that's the first time that any of this started to make sense to me, really. I I knew that when the other speakers weren't sharing any data that it wasn't positive, and fortunately, you were able to mine that data and explain it to us. So thank you. Additionally, it's my understanding that the radiation levels were already above acceptable levels. I don't understand how putting more radioactive material is going to put that under control. That's, that's like saying, if I take garbage and put more garbage on top of it, it's going to become better garbage. I don't know. But maybe that's my language performance. I I don't. I also want to know what evidence is there to suggest that niopium is an appropriate shield for uranium? Has it been done somewhere else? Is it being done? Is that the standard? Is that the best practice? If round water sampling wasn't working, and I've seen some of those stations, I've seen one of them in this thing, if it wasn't working, how are we getting samples? How do we know that everything's hunky-dory up there? I'm very concerned. Uh, I think that's pretty much it for me, other than I learned the term below expectations. And I have to say, this mine, this area, and the work that has been done there is below my expectation. Thank you.
Okay, we have one more delegate, uh, France Jonah, MVP. Oh, sorry.
Well, it's hard to follow this guy. Good evening, everyone. Bonsoir, monsieur, bonjour. My name is France Jeegina. I'm the MVP for Nickelville. And if you live in there in center and at the east end of it, you live in Nickelville, and I'm your MVP. Uh, I'm here tonight because I only heard about this in June, when somebody called my office and started to ask us about naturally occurring radioactive material. I have never heard those words before. I have never heard those words before, um so I wrote to different ministries. And tried to find as much information as I could and very little information came forward. Um I'm really thankful um for um Karen and. Organizing this meeting tonight so that we can all learn more. Um I am an MVP, if I can be helpful, you spoke, don't hesitate to come, I will do my best. But I must say that I learned an awful lot tonight that I didn't know. I have been in touch with the Ministry of the Environment, Ministry of Transportation, Ministry of Mine and our premier on this issue. And they shared very little with me, um the good people from the ministry were a whole lot more open to this than I. Um I'm here to listen to your question, I'll try to get in as many answers as we can and thank you everyone for coming tonight, merci beaucoup.
Okay, thank you. So now we're gonna move on to a question and answer period, so. Where there's a few housekeeping rules, I'm pretty impressed with everyone with this being such a contentious contentious. Issue that we've maintained a good face for our municipality and we've been respectful for, so I would ask that we continue that. Also, we'll avoid repeating the same question, if someone asks about the trees and then someone asks about birch trees, we'll just try to keep that to a minimum. And then we can still write in if you haven't, if you felt that you haven't been heard tonight. Okay, so we're gonna turn the floor open. Open there.
So anyone who would like to uh ask a question or have a comment. Uh we're gonna ask that you proceed uh in line to this mic over here. Um we're gonna keep it to one minute per person and you will be timed. Um and as Merrick Garland said, please uh avoid repeating the same uh questions over and over. Um so when you come to the podium, please state your name and your address and who you're addressing your question to and then I'll roll to that person with the mic.
Okay, my name is Jean Robert Tyroheart. I'm glad to see France Jigina here because she has received hundreds of emails from me over the past decade. The issue is one of trust, we're being asked to trust politicians, experts, whatever. France Jigina knows that the Minister of Transportation of Canada has been involved in debt cover ups in the rail industry. And fake qualification of frontline rail workers, we're being asked to to trust the Minister of Mine. Rick Bartalucci was Minister of Mine, that man has hidden a massive major structural deep debt building scandal. Since that they know of since at least two thousand and seven, these people quite frankly belong in jail, don't ask us to trust them. Studies on the synergistic toxicities of metals. This thing that you want to bring in is a transitional metal, where are your studies? So, France Jigina, would you like to deny publicly anything that you have received hundreds of emails from you on these issues? Because you know about them. She knows. And I have documented, I have thousands of pages against Minister of Housing, Minister of Transportation, the Duckford Administration. All of them, so put it to your little thing. If you focus, impact, also, pay to your salaries.
Okay, we're at the one minute mark, we're just gonna keep this.
Can I just remind everyone to please uh when you're speaking, we know this is an emotional subject, but if we can please. Keep emotions down and please be respectful to who we're speaking to.
Hi, Don Martell, I live in uh Naren Center.
Sorry, I'm just gonna allow France to to.
The issue of trust will be very important. We are asking, we we are being told uh that naturally occurring radiation material is going to be moved. Through our community into uh Agni Lake. I know very little about this, but I know that radiation comes with danger. We need to be able to trust that the environmental. Assessment is being done, that our questions will be answered and we are here tonight because we want to know more. And we hope that the people who share that information with us, we can trust. But if we don't have trust, then it's really hard to get over the fears that we have associated with this project.
Hi, Don Martell, I live in uh Naren Center, I lived here for uh probably sixty years. Um I had a, I have a camp at Agni Lake about uh two miles, maybe three miles away the crow flies. From where this deposit is supposed to be brought in and I also had a house right at the corner of Agni Lake. Uh for quite a few years when the mine shut down. And at that time, the ministry did not want us to eat the liver out of the moose, out of the deer or anything, they would like glowing in the dark, I thought bad it was back when they shut the mine down. Um the levels have went down, but you're going to deposit thirty four thousand tons of radioactive material. Not as bad as radiation. Uh but you're putting that weight on top of all this undisturbed ground that's been there for years. I'm wondering, you say you do ground surface testing and. Uh ground testing and and surface testing, what is your ground surface testing uh required use to do? Can I, could you answer that? Okay, when you do your testing on your your water tables. What are you testing? How are you testing? Are you drilling down? That hill goes up at Agni Lake. It's seventy five feet from the water table. You're telling me that thirty four thousand tons is not going to affect that initial radiation material that's there?
We have. Sorry, the one of the natural water well within the general area and surrounding.
And how deep is the well?
I don't have that information.
How come we don't have that information?
We have information, I don't have.
So we have a meeting on this, why hasn't anybody brought any material with them to talk about this? If you give us some specifics.
Okay, we're gonna maintain decorum.
I don't have the depth of the world here, I don't have that information, yes.
So are we uh going to get this information and the testing that is done since nineteen eighty four till now, you said adopted this mine? When did you say you adopted the mine? Inherited, okay, whatever, in the nineties, what have you done from the nineties till two thousand and twenty four? To cap that mine, to take care of all the existing problems that's there, we still have radiation problems. Why are you bringing that stuff there when you can cap it with a normal ground that we have here with sand? No, I'll tell you why, because Nipissing First Nations didn't want it on their property, so you just found a spot to bring it and that's there in the name of township. We have Aboriginal communities here that don't want it either, how come they haven't consulted us? No, it was hidden till now. Why have we been just now told to vote?
Okay, we're gonna get that information for you for the well.
I I don't understand why the information isn't here.
But we will provide that. Okay, we're gonna maintain decorum, they are our guests and we're gonna treat them accordingly, okay? If anyone else hasn't, if anyone has an outburst, we're gonna ask them to leave, okay? We've done well so far, so let's just keep going down this road and we can ask respectfully, thank you, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Stephanie, I'm from Sudbury.
Can I just answer your question? Like try to answer a little bit, maybe a little bit more information, Mr. Martell. So we do have list of studies that were done, uh we don't have the studies here, honestly, we are managers, we're not the people doing these studies, we have a whole bunch of taxes and. Sections, we do, and we will provide information. Um there is right now some package of information that's gonna be prepared for some the townships and some MPs, that's already the promise. Um we were at the site just yesterday, myself and Rob, the managers don't get out very often, but we did uh walk the site the entire day. We did identify a number of wells at sites, some of them are nested wells, which means there's a cluster of wells in one location that you might notice. And typically, when they monitor groundwater, they monitor at different elevations. That provides the um the flow of water essentially coming off the site, it gives you an idea of there's a flow coming out of it. Um and then we have a surface water sampling, which is over, you know, is done as well, which we talked to today saying that that thing is leaving the site. That is concerning, that we don't, the specifics, we don't have, but I do have a list of studies that were done. Uh by our ministry and some additional third party studies that were also been at site. So in twenty sixteen, there's a gamma dose rate survey that was done. Um this was initiated again in twenty twenty four, there was a soil and groundwater assessment completed by En globe in twenty twenty three. Uh we've been service and groundwater monitoring at sites since twenty fourteen, we do it annually. Uh and also, we are currently doing a human health and ecological risk assessments and I think that might help. With Mr. Martell's question regarding to bioaccumulation. I can't see it, it's, oh, there you go, sorry. So that that information is still forthcoming, when we inherited the site, it was a close site. You know, uranium, uh of course, it's concerning, um we've been monitoring and again, we are a ministry, so we're good for funding, so the funding is limited, we do what we can. Um with this new material that was proposed to us. We initiated a number of studies to understand exactly what you're saying. You know, is it safe to put it there, the additional rock, is it gonna have a, you know, an effect on groundwater, is it gonna lift the groundwater table, is it gonna change the water pathways? Um these things, Complacix is doing for us right now, so we hire third parties to conduct these studies. We inform our decisions based on the information they provide us and essentially, that's, that's what we have, so. Hopefully that helps address your question a little bit better.
Well, it does, and just the only, the only thing I'm concerned about is how come all these new studies are being done now, because new vote is transferred in two thousand and twenty and that's why it's being done now, directly.
Yes, correct, so it was initially, because the site was. Well, so the studies were done because we have to, as part of our license, we have to conduct, you know, inspections and stuff like that, but. For accepting this new material, like we said, can the additional weight be provided and covered? You know, is it gonna be effective? Is this material suitable? Are we allowed to accept it based on our license? So I'm busy with all the questions that we need to answer, um and then we initiated some of these.
Escaping this, excavating this, maybe the ministry or the guy that's doing the transportation there. It's costing you a hell of a lot more money to excavate that than to put it at Agni Lake. So I'm not getting, I'm not getting the drift of why this is even being done.
Right, and all I can say too is, as a receiver, we own the license, we are receiving the material. The whole project behind that is MTO, I'm not sure if you want to speak to that specific, but.
Well, I would really like to hear that.
I I mean, I think you hit the nail on the head, this, this is about uh bringing the material from Nipissing First Nation where it's been sitting there since the nineteen fifties. It's uh, it's sitting in a developed area, which is in a residential community. Uh it's surrounded by businesses, institutions and it's uncontained.
They're bringing it out here.
Yeah. So and they built it around it.
This isn't, if you want, it's the reason, this is the reason it is coming. It's coming because it's incompatible land use and this is a more compatible land use on an existing tailings facility. Properly contained, properly managed.
How come, yeah, in the first nations out here, we're not even consulted about it?
So I can agree that there's some complication on this is lacking with respect to. Can you let me finish please? With respect to indigenous consultations, some of the comments that were made earlier were incorrect. We have had a consultation with I think Amiching and Isnabek, Sagamak First Nation, Serpent River First Nation. I have been.
Okay, that's the last, we're gonna have to ask you to leave.
The indigenous consultation was a component of getting a license renewal to meet the federal duty to consult requirement. And the federal government and the provincial ministries. Combined to do indigenous consultation and satisfy the duty to consult requirements. Additionally, Nipissing First Nation reached out to their partner communities along the haul route. And had their own discussions with those communities, so yes, the consultation has been lacking, but some of the terms about it not taking place with indigenous communities is not correct.
So some of the dates that were held with uh Sagamak and a ticket, a ticket finishing, sorry. Um in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, we met with a ticket machine. Uh and Sagamak, we met with them in two thousand and nineteen, twenty one and twenty two. Um the public consultation did not take place, you're absolutely correct, if anything, this is where lessons are learned. And certainly, you know, activities like this, I think it's fair for the public to.
Uh hi, my name is Stephanie, I'm from Sudbury and my question is, we're all worried about what's happening to the environment around it, as we should be. But what happens to the environment and all people that all this will be passing? From Nipissing to Naren, while it's flying down the highway and transports. We have families all over these highways that are just breathing in whatever's coming off these tracks. And that hasn't been talked about at all, and why are we doing this if it's been there since the fifties? Fix where it is and keep it there, you save all the money and all the health problems and the environment can keep the problem there and contain it there. This is absolutely ludicrous waste of time, big distraction. And you're not caring what anybody else except everyone's paycheck. Is that about the environment? I'd like to know what you're gonna do for all the families when we're all dying from radioactive materials flying around in our environment. No answer, no comment, it's not even, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to learn how to use this microphone again. Um so thank you for the question, um I I think it's a misnomer that this stuff is um flying around. Um it's hard contention that the hauling vehicles will be um parked sufficiently so that this material isn't moving, it's not. Being transported as the truck is moving on the road. Um as they indicated earlier, they're maintaining and constraining themselves to the designated haul route, which is a provincial highway. Um the material that we will be transporting is not a hazardous substance, uh it's. It's permitted to be on the highway and be transported, um it's low radiation type stuff that's naturally occurring in the ore in which it's contained. We do have questions that have come to our attention with respect, in fact, their worship, um your amazing raises previously. Um with us is, you know, how this is gonna get contained in the instance where there might be a vehicle collision and how do emergency responders uh know what they're dealing with? Um as as part of our contractor soils management plan, there is provision for what they would do from the traffic perspective. It needs to be adapted and revised uh to address the concerns that have been raised to us, brought to our attention with respect to the perspective of emergency services provided for the government might be attending. Uh if there's a personal injury, there's no personal injury, there's no need for EMS people to uh um to attend. These drivers are not in contact with the materials in the boxes or the trucks, they're not wearing personal protective equipment. Uh unless they choose, it's their choice, probably to protect themselves, right? So it's our uh, it's our contention that if, let's say, lack of better words, if we. Have a tandem or a triaxle, we go into the ditch, some of the load spills, it's not fluid, it's not moving. Whatever spill gets picked up, there's no absorption uh mechanisms needed to contain, it's simply pick it up with a dozer and put it back up in the truck and.
Then what's the emergency?
It's airborne, sir.
Yeah.
He just said I would have the airborne stuff. As soon as it's over, it becomes airborne.
This stuff is basically just gravel, it's it's not.
If you're gonna drive down my highway and.
We're gonna try to keep going in a direction that everybody can ask their question because we will be here all night.
Now, well, we shouldn't invite.
One hundred percent, and no decisions are being made tonight, we want all the public consultation that we can get, so.
Okay, first of all, I just wanted to thank all the presenters in the main, I think. We've got a lot more information, I probably have a lot more in questions than I wanted to. Nothing, fortunately, I'm not gonna have the time of it to be able to do that. But my name is Ivan Shawan. I'm the president of the Agnew Lake Property Group. I represent fifteen cottages owners, one commercial property within the waterfrontage of the Agnew Lake. I have forty-five years of experience in mining. I've managed several mines in the subversion. I know what tailings are, I've dealt with it many times. The one thing that I know for a fact is that any mining operation that requires. Uh, any work done has to have a permit. And then that permit, they have to have a decommissioned plant. Now, the mining firm that find out Nipissing area had a. They also had decommissioned plant. So I'd like to know where that decommissioned plant went. My assumption is. The decommissioning was done properly by that mining firm. But it ended up going on other people's property. Which it should not have been there, but it was approved at that time by the government, they were able to do that. Now, the people that reside there, okay? Are not happy with that material on the site, and I don't blame them. I certainly wouldn't want to have that in my site. And we don't certainly want that at Agnew Lake property. Anyways. So I guess, one of the questions, I, I had several questions, but one of the questions I had is about this decommissioning plant. So the decommissioning plan, from what I gathered, expired because it was deemed that the material that was brought into that site. Was acceptable at that time. And that's why the government had to take it over. It's their property, they had to get a permit. Because they were pushed in order to get that material off their property, the Nipissing properties. So that's my belief, that now. We're gonna bring material, that we're talking that's non-toxic. Or a very limited. Sure, wait, like, you look at the index of what that means. I don't understand what that means because, is it low toxic, is it medium toxic? What is it? Everybody's got a different version of what that is. And I'm saying that what we did, I managed several district mines. We disposed of our territory, it stayed within our district. We didn't go dump it anyplace else.
Okay, as for any other questions, uh, if you wanted to submit them in writing to the township, we will forward them on to the appropriate ministries. Just to keep things, unless you had a certain question you could ask quickly.
Well, the last question I want is I want somebody to answer the question, why are they moving from a non-disturbed area? And to tell me that they're gonna put it on top of the existing area? That is already contaminated, and you're gonna add additional contamination? Can anybody answer that question? Why can't they top it with raw material? Okay, why does it have to be material that's coming from another mine site? Into our area? I'll tell you, the drinking water, there's, I mean, fifty cottages. That I represent use that water. For cooking, some for drinking. And to contemplate putting. And dumping this waste material less than a kilometer away on the east side of the dam. To me is criminal.
There's so many very much for your questions, I think your concerns are valids. Um, again, we're here to listen, right, we'll take the information back, this is. You know, the people that work with us, uh, rehabilitation experts, we have inspectors, compliance inspectors, they're very passionate. And of course, we do this to ensure public safety and environment security. This is, you know, our primary goal, and these sites, the ministry mines inherited a number of sites that were banned. Through insolvencies, bankruptcies, and we inherit these sites, there are thousands across Ontario. So, we appreciate that, you know. We need to consider where those dollars are gonna go to address some of the biggest hazards. Um, now, this site here, you're right, it's a uranium landfill, let's say, or a tailings facility that was used historically. Highly, you know, um, but it's radioactive. Um, it is, you know, there's no dyeing that, it's, it's great. Um, the cover is naturally wrote. This has been noted, I think, from Northwest, been noted by, um, the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission, it's been noted by us. We know it, um, it requires a lot of resources to fix it. And we were brought forward an option where, uh, some material. That MTO was looking to remediate a site. Because the area is not compatible with the use, so residential uses, and, and the problem with radiation is. Is the rate on gas as well, so if you have a house, Elliot Lake is a prime example. Elliot Lake is a naturally occurring, occurring shelf which radiates, um, it's the geology. People build houses, rate on gas is emitted from this, and it builds up in the basements. People are exposed to it, it's a carcinogen, so similar here. The radiation is there, we know it's there. And it's been identified that there are some areas that are concerning, which we're trying to resolve. The material coming to us, it's been tested, you know, it's gone through Ministry of the Environment, so non-hazardous. This is where this is going, where we don't require a permit from the Ministry of the Environment, because they can say that it's not safe. However, it's a, what is it, normal, a norm, non. Naturally occurring radioactive material. Um, so this has all been looked at, it's been studied, and the reason for the delays are the studies that are required. To ensure that this is done safely, and it will address the problem that we have at site. We didn't create the problem, we inherited it, we are monitoring and ensuring that the site remains safe. Essentially, this is, you know, what we're trying to do though, but.
That's not fair to say that by doing what you're doing now, is you're moving a problem from one area. To another area, which, time permitting, will expedite and get to the point. Where we're gonna have a massive problem, the township is gonna be a burden because they're gonna have to look at fundings and cover it. So I'm saying, if the government thinks it's so safe to use and to, to put it in our site. They should take a look at depreciation of values of the cottage owners. They should take a look at the cost of their rehabilitation of the waterways, if there's water issues. Are they prepared to do that? Would the government be prepared to pay all those guys?
And that's the last, yeah. All, all we can do is monitor and ensure the same city, um, environment to be safe, the waterways are not being impacted. You know, and the groundwater is not being impacted. Again, we depend on third parties, we hire these contractors, we have these specialists, they conduct these studies, provide us reports. And we make decisions that are informed from these reports. Um, a number of reports have been conducted. We work with MTO, and for us, it's material that is suitable. Say, you know, why were we created from there to here? It's because it's licensed, it was built to contain uranium, and it's shown over the forty-five years that it's been there, that. It's been effective, it's a stable site and has a license for it.
Once the decommissioned land is complete, that, that mine is closed. It's not open, both ditching, other materials in that plant, you know, that I.
So that's what we're doing.
My name is Donna Porchless, I'm a resident of Narin Center. I'm also a professional engineer, and I've been in the mining industry since nineteen eighty-seven, I'll let you do the math. Uh, it's been a long time, I also have a degree in chemistry, so I understand a lot of what's being said today. I have two questions. Uh, sorry, I have a comment and a couple of questions, but I'll keep it short. My first comment is about trust, as a professional engineer, I know what it means to be trustworthy. The fact that there has been a. Lack of information, lack of, uh, um, consultation, when I know it's a requirement. To me, as a professional engineer, that's not acceptable. And if you wanna trust the community and yourself as a professional engineer. Facts, information, details, answering our questions in a timely manner is very important to building trust in this community. Because right now, you've got none, okay? My first question, that's my comment, my first question has to do with the tailings pond, so I'll direct it, you're wrong. The tailings pond, when it was built back in the day, had a certain capacity. And I know mines don't overbuild tailings ponds because it's expensive. What percentage of that, or sorry, what is the contained, uh, capacity? That was built in that tailing pond back in the day? And I know you don't have that number in front of you, but I would like to know what the capacity of that tailing pond is. Second thing I'd like to know is what percentage of that tailings pond has been used with the current tailings in it? So is it ninety percent full, ten percent full, what is that number? Okay, I'll, and I have one more question. Once we know how much capacity remains in the tailings pond. How much more capacity will be used up if the Niobium is to be transported here? Okay?
Uh, thank, thank. I, I don't even know where to find it, what, what the original capacity is already. And the way I'll say that is that the historical information that exists for that site. Is the John has indicated that we, we inherit that site. And there is very little information that came along with that, other than materials. Having said that, we, we understand it and we look at it from today's standards. And of good perspective, I took a professional here, I've been doing tailings and design and regulation for. Just over thirty years, or just over thirty years, but I don't know if we have, like, a long time, uh. So the way we look at it as a technical experts is what does it need to be for today's standards? And that in terms of, we was kind of this freedom, I don't get what we type of, my free board is when rain comes in, how much room between that part of the water. And the dam or the invert of the spillway. And it meets standards, and we look at a bunch of other things like wave run up and down, it's gonna go up and down, and how much it's gonna do. We look at that, so long when it asks the questions, we're looking at it from today's standard. That, that standard has to have a certain amount of free board, so from the tailings to the top of the dam, as well as considering the, the inverted elevation. The elevation of this builder, so there is sufficient capacity to meet the requirements based on the classification of that dam, sure. So when we look at the additional thirty-four thousand tons, which is, I think, is eighteen thousand plus two meters. Um, that is not, to say, three percent, I don't know what it is, but I won't never to take that for me. That's say, it's thirteen hectares collectively in area, and average depth would go ten years, I'm not, I'm probably. Off my, never got there anyways, but what, on that area. Being, you know, the original mine, any line of that, or is it covered? Will it give up a hundred percent, if it off, will it turn to thirty percent of the area? Uh, that's to, uh, to provide natural drainage, social drainage, to avoid future problems. Whether the original closure was bigger, it's closing, that's. So we not, not designing promote drainage, so the drainage has come off, which is the. Uh, got, most of the problem, it's been, been upon downstream of the dam, where the heavier part of those dimensions was settled out and, and designed there. Um, that's our goal, we believe. Perspective, I'm new to mines, for, in government speaking, we're four and a half years, I came to the ministry. Mine unit is specifically dedicated to tailings, containing dams, and covers it all, so we are tech folks, experts in that, that's what we do. And we make sure that they're product or standard, that's why we're here to answer questions, and if I don't have, if I will get. I hope that answers your question.
So I, I accept, I understand your answer and, and so far what you said. You said you meet today's standards, but you didn't say what today's standards are. And you didn't also tell me whether, you know, how close are we to that standard? Um, those kinds of numbers and facts and details are the things that will help us understand. Whether or not that's an, an okay thing, okay?
We use, uh, obviously, okay.
I know what it's like to be under.
No, no, I don't understand.
How close are we to, that's what I'm looking for.
So, so that's a CBA, yeah, and that is, in there is a standard, impossible stability, possible, that's important, that's all, that sets the criteria and the need to. Thanks, and so.
I just hate to be the bad guy here, but if we could put them in writing, if you had additional questions, we're at about seven minutes, so if we. Maintain that average, we're gonna be here till tomorrow, so I don't wanna, I hate to be. No, I hate to be the bad guy, but we just have to keep it moving, and if anyone has a question that they would like to put in writing. We would certainly share those on.
Put up there, but around an hour later, it's fine in the upper part. I'm sorry, um, the Niobium, we talk a lot about radiation, is there any other. Uh, toxic metal, mineral, uh, or material of waste? That is contained in the material being transferred here, heavy metals, uh, oil, other waste? Uh, that's a question I would also like answered, if not right now, later, thank you.
And we'll actually share all the question and answers on the Facebook, so that people can kind of monitor that as well. Okay, go ahead.
So I answered your question, yes, there is heavy metals associated with, with the Niobium rock tailings. Um, I wouldn't say any specific one element is, is alarming, most of the focus has always been on the norm as, as being the concern. Um, through some of the modeling exercises done, uh, to get the license renewal or the Agnew Lake site. Uh, you know, modeling has been done with, with those data results to ensure that the metals are compatible. Uh, with anything that's existing in the tailings at Agnew Lake. Um, you know, we've done the chain tests as well to, to make sure, you know, no acid is gonna become a problem. Um, but a lot of this comes back to getting the information, right? So mines have a lot of information, we have a lot of information as well. The question is, how do we get that information out to people in a way that you can understand? Because, you know, I have, we, we've been compiling lists of reports we've done, and we have a list of about, you know, twenty studies, shall we say. All very, very highly technical, how, so this is what we're working on right now, it's like, how do we get this information in the hand? How, so this is what we're working on right now. It's like, how do we get this information in the hands of the public so it makes sense? Because when you read a lot of these technical reports, it doesn't make sense unless you're, you're an expert in that field, so.
I have no problem with you setting up a table. I'm more than capable of reading one.
Sir, the floor is yours.
Uh, good evening. Thank you all for coming out. I'm so happy because I want to explain who I am and why I have such a, why I'm such a vested interest in this meeting today. My name is Bob Leecey. We have a family cottage located just over half a mile from Agnew Lake. My dad had built that cottage in nineteen fifty-three, seventy-one years old. Matter of fact, the geologist stayed in our camp and that's how it found mine, because it was down the hill, the old chief, it was stuck. Okay, so my uncle Art had his original SO here and there and he found, I guess, three houses down in the early nineteen hundreds. So the, we've watched this whole thing come about, you know, Coradus and building that mine spring acid on, it was most melt her, they sprayed acid on the tinglings. We watched the move, you know, move the tailings, we placed behind, which I have to point out, if you do, look at the bottom of the map, it's not a shoreline area. It is the highland, if you come this area, you'll know where you'll Ranger Tower, right, Espinal Bay. Go up and then you go for the tailings, down that block and look across and you'll see the Ranger Tower, because it's the same height. Okay, so the main concern here tonight is water runoff. The leaching out of there, gonna, John Creek is a half mile away, Manistic's halfway, and I think the, uh, the building on, uh, Manistic is above the tailings, where they do the water testing. It's at the road, it's above the tailings. You know, so the issue is not transporting it, like, it's ten, twenty, thirty years from now. The water is flowing into John Creek, it's flowing in Manistic, it's flowing down the Spanish River right here. That's where the radioactive material is going and nobody in this room promised me, I have to show you one thing. This is a, this is a picture, this, thank you. Here's a picture dating last Saturday, my three-year-old granddaughter in John Creek, just over half a mile from that tailing. Okay, we were swinging that creek for seventy-one years, my man, a lot, a week before that. Nobody here is gonna tell me that in ten years from now, or next year, we're gonna be swinging in that creek. So what I'm trying to say, and the issue is the runoff, it's not the transportation, it's not the covering, that it moves my walk across once every ten years, it's the water that's flowing right down the Spanish River here into Lake Huron.
Good evening. My name is Chief Hudson Berger from Ondik Farming First Nation, and I'm the tribal chair of the Nusanciam tribal council. I'm totally disagreement with this project. I was the actual first meeting. But the lack of consultation with First Nation people, there are six hundred and forty-some First Nations across Canada, and you only consulted with four? So was there a non-disclosure agreement with these four First Nations? I want an answer to that, because I will be talking to these chiefs. We just had a session in Lively, uh, for three days in regards to what projects are going on and went around the circle, and not one of those four First Nations mentioned this project, which is very concerning. This represents six hundred and forty First Nations across Canada. They should be looking at these projects before they just go ahead and start funding them. And these, these four First Nations, did they benefit from this contracts with this project? I want to know that too, because that's part of the scenario that's going on, that the contractors for this town, the First Nations were notified. And how did this go out to public tender? Because I've never seen it. Was it individualized with four First Nations to talk about what they wanted to do with this project? I'd like to know that answer. And it's very secretive. It's a secretive process that's gonna affect the lands. Sam El, we said it, he's from Porlottman, which is under the UCCM tribal council, of what it's affecting and how it's affecting that land. And it's very disgraceful that we weren't even notified. We have consultation protocols with all the government agencies that they have to notify us in anything with our territories. That's one of our territories. And we use that territory for fishing, for trapping, for other areas. So I'd like to know those answers. You can answer them tonight, or you can send them to me, because I need to know them. Because when we have First Nations that are supporting, I know Nipissing wants to clean up that area, but you're bringing their garbage to our area. And you wouldn't like it if we took that garbage and put it in your area either. So why are you doing that?
I'd like to hear the answer. That's what I figured.
I'm trying to pick the right question out of there. The, the communities I mentioned were the ones we've had closer communications with. I believe the, the list was longer than that to start. Um, precipitated by my mines and, and CNSCs meeting their duty to consult requirements.
So the tender was put out by Ministry of Transportation in accordance with, uh, indigenous procurement policies that we have within the provincial government. Um, it was a non-competitive procurement.
Okay, we're gonna look forward to those answers on the Facebook, uh, Ghee. And we're limiting it to one question, so if you had another question, you can certainly submit it, uh, in writing.
I have a few questions with, uh, we're gonna discuss at council. Uh, Ghee de Patsy, Town Council for Naren and Island. My constituents, uh, and I hear it every day, don't want this. So now I fear this plan of yours, which was had without our permission, is going to entice our taxpayers into civil disobedience. So I would suggest you go back to the drawing board and try another plan.
Thank you, uh, for the opportunity to speak. Chief Rod, you know, I'm a voice for First Nation. Uh, we're in the heart of our traditional territory. Um, I, for one, uh, was kind of blindsided by this. Only recently have I learned of, uh, this, uh, uh, disposal of the niobium, this location. So although our pretend partners to, to the east and to the west may have been aware of that, you're in the heart of our territory and as a rep, a representative leader for Western First Nation, I do not consent to this, uh, delivery of radioactive material with product to this location. The talk about, um, the threshold, the consultation, I think it was mentioned by the Ministry of Transportation, I, I do believe. And, and we were not, uh, advised of it. I, I did have a quick discussion with our lands department prior to coming here, and I wanted to know, had we been consultively, at what degree of consultation? Consultation, meaningful dialogue would mean an exchange of words, uh, participations, uh, in a meeting. This had not happened, and I'm aware that we, there was a license renewal, but there was no communication back and forth. So there's something lacking in that conversation that would, that would constitute to me meaningful con- consultation. Under section thirty-five, there is an obligation on government to do exactly that. That has not happened. I'm, I'm not satisfied that, uh, you've met what I believe, uh, is, is safe regard to not only the, the community here, the township, but the First Nations, that will, will, uh, will exist, this decision here that's going on. And so I think in both the seven generations down the road. And, you know, I'm, I'm a land steward, so maybe not the technical expert that, uh, that we've been hearing from here on the panel. But I do know that I have to protect the interests of our future generation. But with that, I, I just really, I'm very dissatisfied in the interest of our community, that they need to have, uh, more informed consultation and simply satisfy by saying you've visited or where you consulted with First Nations in this surrounding area. Doesn't apply to us, we haven't consulted with, and my, uh, our tribal chair, chief, uh, has the court here has mentioned, and, and we're, we hold to that, and we're not satisfied with what's taking place here. Thank you.
Oh, it's late and, uh, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet, but, um, my grandmother, my grandfather, probably, well, my late grandfather, Marshall and Rose Duffy, um, have lived here since I my, my mother is, um, has been here. I've been here my whole life. Um, my mother and father, uh, actually met, um, on the sand there. We have a cottage on, uh, Bell Bay. Um, we've always fished and canoed up the John Creek. Um, in many, uh, feeds a speckle trout and things. Um, this land here is sacred to me. Um, we hunted it, we fished it for almost three, four generations now. And even made a living off of it. My uncles own the trout lines around here for, um, minnows and leeches, bay fish. Um, so my question to you is, what is this gonna do to the bay fish in the John and the Manistic Creek? That is my main question. Thank you.
So we do have a study that's ongoing currently, it's getting at, uh, it's called, uh, a human and health ecological risk assessment. So this looks at, you know, the potential impacts from this sites. You know, looking at the contaminants, looking at the radiation, looking at the tailings and its contents, and the potential impacts to the biota, the water, um, the aquatics, and whether or not, you know, this looks very able to bioaccumulate. And also looking at potential receptors, I think, uh, this lady had spoken about it. You know, how does this impact human health? Through radiation exposure, through direct exposure, through inhalation. Um, and this information, again, is gonna be used, it's gonna report by equal metrics. Um, I believe it's still in draft, and somebody told me it might be completed now, but, um, it's a study that's ongoing currently. So we'll have some information on this. And again, just thank you for your question, and this information we can provide, essentially is, you know, we also, we're not experts in everything.
Quick follow-up too, is that, why weren't these studies done?
Before.
Before all of this?
They start transporting and they have it from study.
So this is, this will be the, probably the third round of a human health ecological risk assessment. We have the same study done for the sites at, at Nipissing. And that's one of the, uh, reports we're gonna look at sharing and trying to get that information out there. Um, to, to answer the question, there, there is no concern about uptake of fish in surface water. There's no concern about uptake in vegetation. We sampled vegetation where the material currently exists. There's no indication of any kind of bio, bioaccumulation of the food chain through the water, through the soil. It, it's, the concern is negligible, and it's just about getting that information in your hands so that you can believe what I'm saying.
My question is, uh, very short between. Uh, who will be signing the waiver, assuming the liability, if anyone is harmed by this material and its movement? Tell me who will be responsible? You, you?
My name is Eric. I'm local.
So I guess it would be the Ministry of Mines, because we are the licensed E for the sites, so we would ultimately be responsible.
So you individually?
No. The province, as a licensed area. Because we are ultimately responsible to keep the site safe. And, you know, we're held accountable by federal.
So nobody, no specific person?
The province. The Ministry of Mines, I mean.
Because there's gonna be people, all gonna be later.
My name is Norman Purlo. I'm late sixty years. Like this gentleman mentioned, and a whole bunch of us here, Mr. Reese and all that, we've been here all our life. It seems what's going on here, that this plan has been put in place before everything was done. That hasn't been done yet. There's people still waiting to find stuff out. No one has the information. Concerning, my question is simply this. When is the latest time that you can get that stuff off Nipissing, before you have to have it here or somewhere else? Is there a timeframe where it has to be here, and that's why this is going on, why no one was told? There's no deadline. So it may never happen? Here? And why was Elia Lake, why did Elia Lake refuse it?
Okay, with that, we'll conclude our questions, uh, period. I think, uh, the several ministries up here will have their homework to do, and we will share that. And if there's any more, you can direct that to one of the, uh, Baldwin or Naren's admin with emails, and we will, uh, do our best to forward that to the appropriate ministries. Oh, I'm just gonna, so the end result of that meeting is officially adjourned at ten oh six. Gonna get someone to, Jason and Bert?
There we go.
Or Jason and, uh, Wayne.